I will note Jamie Woods, the county attorney is on the meeting via Zoom. So if you have any questions, we can certainly ask him. First item on the agenda is opening, reading of bids. There appears there are none. Move on to reports and requests. First item is the accounts payable docket. Is there a motion?
Second.
Your motion to second. For those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have one of the things that we like to do in the county and then kind of not like to do in the county. That is, we're presenting a key to the county to Ms. Patricia Gottsie. Why we like to do is because we like to celebrate the accomplishments and a lifetime of service that our dedicated employees give. What we don't like to do it is because that means they are leaving and going someplace else. I think it's very appropriate that we honor Patty. The very first, so when I first became commissioner, actually before I, right after the vote, the first person who gave me a call was Patty saying, aye, boss, your keys will be here, you do this here, you do this, you do this there. And of course, I forgot 95% of what she said had to call her three more times for her to kind of set me straight. But Patty was just a presence in the Board of Commissioners' office for a number of years. You could say she was born to serve in that department. Didn't even serve with her dad for all those years, Dick Larison. I mean, she really had an impact on just how the county was run. I mean, she was often called the fourth commissioner because if you want anything done, you want to see Patty because that's how it would get done. I know I spoke with Commissioner Bob Kovac. He was unable to be here today, but he wanted to make sure I passed along best wishes to you. And I'll do a little bit of ruckus and play with my sleeves a little bit for Bob. And Cindy Bottel, I talked to Cindy as well, and she unfortunately could not make it here. But she wanted to also make sure that I conveyed her sincerest congratulations and and best wishes to you as you take on this new chapter of your life. Yeah. Things haven't been the same since you left the Board of Commissioners' office a number of years ago to go on to greener pastures with Sheriff Grisgorek. And then your continued service with Sheriff Redmond. So thank you so much for a lifetime of commitment, service and dedication to the citizens of St. Joseph County. Thank you for more than two decades of friendship to me personally. And yeah, I think on behalf of everyone at the Board of Commissioners and across the entire county, thank you so much for everything that you have done. Are there any other comments that folks would like to make?
Just honored to be able to give you the key to the county. Best wishes to you and your retirement, hon. It's nice, always been nice seeing you too. Thank you.
Mike Hammond, Sancho County Auditor with offices on the second floor. I'm here with another former commissioner, Mark Dobson, who would like to say a few words. I, I too want to honor Patty for all her hard work and her friendship. I'm getting emotional. She was, I ran against her dad and probably beat him in the election. And the question is like, well, you know, what's, how's Patty going to react? And I remember I, I watched her at an event at MR Falcons. It was a campaign event and how she campaigned really hard for her dad, who was not feeling well at the time. And I said to my, my late wife, Mary, with whom Patty became very close. If that woman gives me one tenth of the loyalty that she gives to her father, I'll, I'll be okay. And she gave me everything. She was so helpful. I was trying to teach at St. Joe High School at the time. And the schedules would change constantly and she was able to work. Kept me, you know, going and come in and interrupt meetings and boss, you got to get out of here. You're going to be late and always kept me where I needed to be. And I just, this is one of the friendships that, that I've been able to cultivate. I've been blessed to have that is just means so much to me. And thank you, thank you.
Not sure I can top any of the words. And those of you who know me know that I'm usually not at a loss for words, but I, I know.
You can please state your name and address for the record.
I also am going to give you my barber's address, but I'm Mark Dobson. Two zero eight eight zero Diamond Shores Drive, Cassopolis, Michigan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you, Commissioner Hammond for, or Auditor Hammond, former commissioner for inviting me up. And just on a note of humor, I believe the last time I called in, I was greeted with such a friendly greeting that I meant to remind you that Deb Fleming is my favorite current commissioner. But all kidding aside, a key to the county is something very special. It's not just freely given, not easily given. It has to be somebody who has impacted the county to receive a key. That's a really apt description for Patty. She absolutely impacted the county. Her commitment, her dedication and her integrity are without parallel in the county. This is a person who will be greatly missed and I would not have succeeded as a commissioner without her effort, without her guidance. I was honored, most honored when she put a sign of mine in her yard, knowing that we were of different flavors and knowing the fine gentleman that her father was and, and is during his service. It was probably one of the greatest honors I received in the time that I was county commissioner and will always treasure that. And the only other appropriate thing I could think to do and ask for would be to ask that we give Patty a standing ovation for her service to St. Joseph County.
Our fellow Commissioner Emeritus is, join us, let's get a picture.
You want to make a comment?
I would like to, yes.
Yeah, there was another comment there.
Right.
Sorry, Sergeant Rebecca Wallach, St. Joe County Police Department, 401 West Sample in our fine city. And I just want to say that I have worked for the county for well over 20 years. And I've come into contact with a lot of different people in a lot of different capacities in county government. And until I had an opportunity to work literally elbow to elbow with Patty under Sheriff Grisgorek, I didn't realize everything that she did. And I just want to say that in her capacity as financial officer for our department, when I got to know her the best, I don't believe that I have ever met anyone who so selflessly was dedicated to whatever her job at hand was. And it didn't matter if that was budget time when she came in first and left last and didn't get any sleep because she took work home with her. Or if that was during the days when I would call with what I thought was a pretty stupid question and she would set me straight. So I just want to say that I really appreciate having had the opportunity to work with Patty. And I know that I'm not the only one who will miss her very, very much, but wish her the best.
Any other folks like to make a comment? All right, let's.
Good for you.
As with all keys to the county, there is a small rental fee that, don't worry, we'll, we'll invoice you later. It'll be great. Also want to thank my two previous commissioners from District One, Mr. Hammond and Mr. Dobson for being here today. And I think it's just a testament to the role that Patty played in keeping us all out of trouble as best she could. All right. Moving on, business of the month.
Excuse me, could we jump to the citizen as the recipient needs to go pick up people at the airport? Take to the airport.
Most certainly.
All right, well, if you could go to the podium, young man, Mark McDonald.
Yes.
Who is technically not going to be running the restaurant per se, but I'm sure will be there to answer questions and so on. Of 30 plus years of establishing one of the top eating establishments in the state of Indiana and the Midwest. But in addition to all the, the great food and people that he has served over the years, he has done a enormous amount of work in the community, helping people along the way. Tremendous things that he has done that have gone unnoticed. So appreciate all the time effort you've done for the community for a long, long time.
Thank you, you're very welcome. I'm honored to receive this award. It's a little different than when I usually come here that it's all three Republicans and the seats of government up here. But we are very proud of what we've done over the 30 years. This marks 47 years in restaurant management, most of which has always been in South Bend, either at the Boar's Head, which sadly is gone, typical new place, Century Center, and then LaSalle Grill. So a fairly long history in restaurant management. Before that, serving and bartending, starting at the bottom rungs and then moving up. It's been a very proud career and I'm happy that I have a person, my, my oldest child Laurel, who is most like me. First born left-handed and she's doing a great job already, along with another famous St. Joe County name, Casey Dvorak, one of the childrens of Mike Dvorak. And they're doing a wonderful job and allowing me some time to go visit grandchildren throughout the United States and here. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, and it was good seeing you the other side.
I know, we sat together at dinner last Saturday.
A week ago, yeah.
Yeah, a week ago.
My parents, Bob and Nancy Shriver, always enjoyed going to LaSalle Grill too.
Oh, yes.
With my mom there too. So it was nice. It was always nice. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you again.
Thank you, Mark. And Derek did say something about like gift cards maybe or that was.
Well, I don't know, I didn't, there was no pay to play here, so.
All right, well, I'm just checking. We're the shot.
So we will have a plaque for you. You'll be on our Commissioners' Hall of Fame with all the other recipients and we'll get that to you. So again, appreciate all that. I don't know if there's anybody on Zoom that would like to say anything about Mark that the public could hear. Okay, seeing none, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Appreciate your time, be careful, buddy. Thank you.
Take care, best wishes. Thank you.
All right, business of the month, Commissioner Fleming.
Yes, the business of the month this month is called the diner on 12th. And it has supported the Michoacan athletics on numerous occasions. Kate Sargent, the owner, is always happy to help. The diner on 12th has provided Michoacan High School Athletics hospitality for 75 people for their football games, for 60 people in their softball versus cancer classic, and for their girls' basketball sectional. And I have been told that the diner on 12th staff ham sandwiches are definitely stacked and their homemade desserts are never disappointed. Also, Michoacan High School coaches and workers always enjoy and are thankful when hospitality is provided by the diner on 12th. Thank you, Kate Sargent, and congratulations on being awarded business of the month. Thank you so much.
Is anyone from the restaurant on the call perchance?
What I was wondering, I had told her about it.
Okay, well, congratulations to the restaurant on 12th. Youth of the month, Mr. Fleming.
Right, the youth of the month is Drew Hildebrandt. I don't know if you guys have seen this ad on the, in the Tribune or not, I mean, his information. And he graduated and wrestled at Penn High School. And he wrestled in college at Central Michigan University and this year placed fourth at the 2021 NCAA Division One Wrestling Championships at the Enterprise Center in St. Louis, Missouri. He is an outstanding wrestler. Backed in 2016, when he was at Penn, he won the IHS double A state championship. So congratulations on being awarded youth of the month for all your success, Drew. Thank you so much.
Doesn't appear as though Drew is on the call either, so we'll make sure that we get, get those awards to our, to our great citizen partners across, across the county.
Yeah, I had talked to them and they knew it and I told them, but who knows what today's like, I'm sorry, but yeah.
All right, moving on, bills passed by the St. Joseph County Council at a public hearing held on April 13th, 2021. We're going to kind of take these in two, in two parts. The following bills were passed, Bill 3321, Ordinance 2821, Salary Amendment for the Health Department, Bill 3721, Ordinance 2921, Salary Amendment for PSAP, Bill 3521, Ordinance 3021 is monthly transfer and appropriation. And then Bills 3121, Ordinance 3321, and Bill 3221, Ordinance 3421, were bond information for the, the possibility of refinancing some ceded bonds. Right now, the rates aren't to where they would need, that it makes sense. We wanted at least to get this initial legwork done. In the events the bond market was more favorable, then we could refinance those bonds when that time comes. Bill 2621, Ordinance 3521, an amendment to the Fair Housing Code, and Bill 2721, Ordinance 3621, Hazard Pay for Dukeham Center Employees. Are there any questions or comments about any of these items?
Negative.
Seeing none, is there a motion?
There's a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, of those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have Ordinance 5821, which, I'm sorry, Bill 5821, which is Ordinance 8520, I'm sorry, 5820, Ordinance 8520, which is renewal of the mask ordinance in St. Joseph County. So I will now, I guess, are there any questions or comments for the, from the Board of Commissioners before I open it up to the, anyone wishing to make comments in general? All right, are there any, now open the floor up, if anyone would like to speak either for or against. Ordinance 8520.
Can I speak? This is Amy Drake, Granger. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Go ahead.
So I guess, Mr. Woods, what is the definition of address for folks?
Really?
I, we.
Really, you gonna do this to me?
It's just, it's, we need to do things, we need to follow the law and how we act. So, Mr. Woods, what do we need to?
If the Board of Commissioners, a, a street address or business address would be fine. It's the Board of Commissioners' purview if they want to go down this to, to make that requirement or not, so. But a business address or a street address.
Okay. But does that need to include street number?
It should, we've always, you've always traditionally required it, so.
Okay. All right.
My address is 16985 Hidden Valley Drive in Granger. I think you should reconsider having people state their addresses in public hearings when issues are controversial and people dox people. Additionally, I would just like to say, you all know my feelings on this. You guys have a bully pulpit. I think you should wait to veto this bill for 10 days. That is in your purview. There's no reason to rush it. This mask extension is unnecessary. Masks have done nothing to bring cases down in the county. And if we have a little bit of a respite, because right now we have no law that is in place in the, in the county, we should take it. So I ask you Commissioners today to please delay this vote until Friday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? So if you would, I think you're automatically muted. If you, also you can raise your hand in the Zoom feature as well, so we can make sure we get your comments.
I don't see you raise your hand, but I'd like to speak.
You're on.
So we've been dealing with this COVID thing for well over.
Name and address, please.
Jesse Davis, P O Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana 46680. And that's my business address. We've been dealing with this COVID thing for well over a year and a half now. Personally, myself, I've worked throughout this. I, I work in sewer and septic industry, which we all know there is a much more chance of catching diseases and things in human waste. And I will say I have been in many homes, many businesses and, you know, met with many people. I've not had one customer that insists that, you know, I put a mask on in their home or anything of that nature. And I fall into that class of people who, you know, should definitely, I guess, be wearing a mask. I'm over 55, I'm a diabetic and I haven't caught this. And the survival rate and the numbers that are out there, I mean, at this late stage in the game, I think it's kind of senseless for the county to be pushing for this extended mask mandate. And I mean, to most people that I've spoken to, I run a very large community page on Facebook with about 5,000 members. Many people have spoke out about this in these groups. And the majority of the people agree that this is just a senseless ordinance and it's a waste of our time. And, and many people think it's a money grab towards businesses. So I'm in favor of a veto.
Medical examiner Francisco Diaz telling the Washington Post, the autopsy found no evidence.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Jesse. Anyone else would like to speak on this issue?
Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. I am not afraid to share my address. I am also not afraid to say that I believe the mask ordinance works. I believe masking does work. I, and I accept the other people don't. But there are just as many experts on the side that say masks don't serve any purpose as there are experts with science behind them that say masks work. It is, I find it disrespectful when somebody, like Jesse, the speaker just said, like Jesse Davis just said, when he goes into people's homes and they want him to wear a mask, he wears a mask. When you go into a business that has a sign on the door saying, wear a mask and don't wear a mask, you are disrespecting and endangering the employees in that business. You're going in there for 15, 20, 30 minutes, there's an employee working in there for eight to 10 hours. They also said there's evidence that masking doesn't work. Well, it may not be working because we have people not following the mandate. All it takes is one person to walk in that door without a mask and spread whatever virus to everybody who comes in contact with them because they're not wearing a mask. Again, I, I, I agree that it sort of is personal choice. I, I don't know whether extending this mandate would, would serve any purpose. But right now, the people who say the mask mandate is necessary are the ones in control. If you don't like the ones in control, then you change them. You don't, you, you have anarchy then. Then you have the teacher saying, nobody can chew gum in class, and five students saying, I want to chew gum, so we're going to chew gum. You have to have one person calling the shots. Thank you and please, everybody stay safe.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this matter?
Yes, Stephen Whitmer, 56745 East View Drive, Osceola, Indiana. I, I do not have a spleen, therefore my immune system is heavily compromised. However, this mask mandate is full of holes, as well as all masks are full of holes. I'm no epidemiologist by any measure. However, I've done enough research to try to keep myself healthy. And the, the permeability of almost all masks worn by individuals do not filter out the virus. I might catch a few, oh, sure, catch spittle, you sneeze, it'll grab bacteria. However, to be forced to wear a mask impinges, impedes my civil liberties. To be able to go to Menards and make a purchase and be required to wear a mask, to me is socialistic, Marxist. And I don't want to be told what I can or cannot do. Now, if this was the 19 teens when we had the Spanish flu and there were people dropping dead in the street, what, 50 million approximately died during that time worldwide? Then, yeah, okay, maybe we need to all suit up if we go out and wear a hazmat suit. But to wear these cloth masks, other masks, does no good. As you can see in my video here, the facial hair, I'll be doggone if the government's going to tell me I need to shave my facial hair so I can wear a mask properly. This is way over and above what initially was brought by a year ago. This just needs to end. It's, it's getting out of control and the masks really don't do any good. They may catch some particles, but they're not effective. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? I will ask one final time, anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes. Jennifer Towers, 50575 Trails North, Granger, Indiana. I, I'll make it very brief because I know you are on the same page with us as you had voted no last time to the extension of this mask ordinance. But I just ask that you do your due process and extend the vote, wait to vote the full 10 days just to send a message that there are people in this community who do oppose this mandate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
This is Brenda Harold, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my address is 1448 Garland Circle. And I would also just like to ask the same, just to wait the four, 10 days to veto, strong disagreement to the mandate. You know, as, as it was mentioned earlier by someone, there, there is disagreement among professionals about whether the masks work or whether they don't. But I would say we need to consider at what cost it comes at, even if they do. Because I, I know I mentioned this at the last meeting you had, just the concern for children and their psychological well-being.
I don't know if you were listening.
Oh, yeah, I heard you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? We'll make a final call.
Hi, this is, this is Deborah Hancock, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, 51948 Carriage Hills Drive, South Bend. I just want to ask too that you veto it and wait the allotted amount of time that you can. I just reiterate the fact that this needs to be a personal choice, especially at this point in time. If someone feels they need to wear a mask or is in danger, they certainly have the right to keep wearing a mask. And it's, it's kind of funny to me that we act like this is so dangerous and we're talking about things like whether you have to have it on to walk into a restaurant or as you're walking around Target or a zoo or something like that. Like if things were, if it was that deadly, I don't think people would be choosing to go out and do those things if they were that scared. Just like the gentleman mentioned, the 1918 Spanish flu, people weren't, the controversy wasn't whether they were going to go out and do optional things. It was life and death, like you could not leave your house and it's just gotten out of hand. So yeah, I would just like to reiterate that it needs to be a personal choice. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? We'll make a potentially final call. All right, thank you. Are there any comments the members of the board would like to make? I would just, before I call for a vote, just make a couple of comments. As to clarify, the ordinance that we're talking about here has nothing to do with the mask mandate that was put forth by the Health Department. And I will reiterate my, it was. was put forth by the health department. Um, and I will reiterate my, it was unfortunate that the health department took the tack that they did. Um, the fact the last three weeks have kind of shown that the focus has shifted from the mitigating mitigation strategies and the other things, uh, from a vaccination standpoint, that's been very successful um, as it relates to COVID. It's kind of now getting bogged down in can we, can't we? Is there an order? Is there an ordinance? All those things. And that's what we were trying to avoid. That's why both mayors, myself and Jeff Ray, you know, we thought that the wisest course of action was to take this to a very strong advisory because keep in mind, the health department's order is not enforceable. So it is, in essence, it is nothing more than a strong recommendation as it is. So the thought was just let's call it what it is and then let's all focus on things that that are, that we can all move forward in, in unison. So, since that hasn't happened, we're having these very conversations now, but just keep in mind, the order, the ordinance that we're talking about today only impacts businesses and their employees. So any business, so Menards or any other store, that is the business's choice to require face covering. It's not mandated by the, by the state or by the county. That is purely a decision that they have made to do business. And the only people, this is nothing to do, this ordinance has nothing to do with the overall mask mandate, mask order, any of those things. It simply is specific to employers being fined if their employees are not wearing an appropriate face covering. So that is why, um, the Chamber of Commerce, Jeff Ray reached out to us late yesterday and they'd provide a survey with their membership and the overwhelming majority of their membership indicated that they were in favor of continuing this ordinance moving forward since it does have a strong, since it has a sunset clause of, I think, May 27th or 26th, so just soon before Memorial Day. Now, one of the questions I had about the health department was they felt they couldn't advocate their authority by making this a strong advisory versus a mandate. Yet they did that very same thing when they put a, a hard stop date. So no matter what the situation is, no matter what, where we find ourselves in the end of May, this, the mask order stops. So they did advocate that very authority. They said they couldn't in the first place. But all that said, since this primarily impacts the business community, I will listen to the voice of those from the business community and I will be supporting the extension of this ordinance. That said, I will now call for a vote. Is there a motion?
Of a motion to table.
Motion dies for lack of a second. Are there any other motions?
Uh, make a motion to veto.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. Of those in favor, are there any of the comments for the board of members would like to make?
Sure. I'll, I'll go on. At the end of the day, Andy hit it, uh, Commissioner Costelny hit it very good. Um, this is just a somatical argument at this point. Since this entire thing is not enforceable, which the courts had deemed, again, I was very, very, very disappointed in the health when the elected leaders and another leader of the community were on the same page of just making it advisory. And since it is not enforceable, it would make sense. Every business can do what they feel is proper for them. Um, I view things one way. People can view another. At the end of the day, we could have passed this to Friday, but again, I know that the county council will veto our veto. So it doesn't make sense to draw that out another weekend. Let's do this. And I'm just kind of leery of, um, what the health department has done along this entire process of hopefully that they adhere to what they promised everybody that the mandate, uh, again, which is not enforceable, will be done on the 27th. So hopefully they, they stay with that date uh, and let people get on with making their decision. Any business, people can do that. I think at some point we will find out if, if we will make masks, not, you don't have to wear a mask in the county city building. I am socially distinct, so I'm not doing that. Plus I want people to hear me. So at the end of the day, that's why I'm in favor of the veto. The council will veto our veto and then we get on with five more weeks of questions that we get daily. Everybody, again, there's a lot of things important in this community going on that we're trying to fix, but as Andy said, three and a half weeks ago, when this started up, we're going to be asking and being asked and having to answer questions about this entire quagmire of questions. So again, that's why I'm voting, why I'm voting.
I agree.
Right. Have there no more comments? We have a motion to second. Of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. Motion passes two to one. Um, one final comment on this. And one of the reasons I'm voting in support of the extending the ordinance is because I'm going to, uh, very directly hold the health department to their word as part of the order that they submitted, that it will end the end of May, period. No exceptions, no extensions. I will, I will abide by what they wish, but then I will also hold them to what they've said they would do. Awesome. All right. Moving on to infrastructure planning and growth. We have the consent agenda. On that, a subdivision bond for the Belterra subdivision and irrevocable letter of credit for Laurel Creek subdivision sections one, two, three, and four. Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, request approval of quote award installation of striping and pavement markings at county maintained roundabouts. Mr. Sky.
Good morning. Sky Metters, county engineer, offices on infrastructure planning and growth, offices on the seventh and 11th floor of this building. Um, I'll get that right. So I say it right the first time at some point here. Um, what you have before you is a, uh, request for a quote award for installation of striping and pavement markings at nine of our county maintained roundabouts. We went out and, uh, um, to four different, uh, companies that did this kind of work requesting quotes. We had to submit quotes back and, uh, the low quota for those for the base quote, which was the roundabouts and alternative one, which is the striping between the roundabouts on Douglas. Um, the low quota for those was the air marking company for both, both the base quote and alternative number one for a total of $170,957.90. We have reviewed these quotes and find that they meet the requirements to set forth and upon review, we recommend, uh, that the award of the base quote and alternative number one be awarded to the air marking company in the total amount of $170,000. $170,957.90. Are there any questions?
Are there in fact any questions?
Just to jump, how many total roundabouts do we have in the county?
Um, this itself is just for nine. I'm not positive of the exact number off the top of my head.
So are we doing 25% 50 at this point?
This is probably, this is, this is, this is a probably more than three quarters of them. We're doing most of them now.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, um, just for the sake of, not argument, but where, where are most of the, the roundabouts located?
It would be, uh, in the, in the northern part of the county.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because in my neck of the woods, there's not a lot of.
Right. No, no, it's, it's in the higher traffic areas.
We need to get more of those out there.
I, I, I agree.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve the air marking company to do the maintained roundabouts.
Second.
We have motion in a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next request.
Thank you.
FEMA. Thank you, Sky. Request approval of FEMA home buyout grant, release waiver, indemnity and hold harmless agreement for fire department training.
Good morning, Commissioners Chris Brown, Department of Infrastructure Planning Growth on the, with offices on the seventh and 11th floor. See, Sky, it's, it's hard to get right. It's a mouthful. Um, before you today are actually two agreements, two separate agreements that kind of say the same thing, um, between the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners and two fire departments, uh, that are local to the area, the Southwest Central Fire Territory and Penn Township Fire Department. Um, as we have been going through these FEMA, uh, acquisitions, uh, it was suggested by Ray Schultz, uh, with PSAP that, uh, we enter into talks with the fire departments on training opportunities for these homes prior to their demolition. So as people vacate, these are vacant properties, it makes an ideal training spot for, uh, these fire departments to get some of their annual, annual training done. So upon discussion with, uh, the Indiana Department of Homeland Security and FEMA, uh, it was suggested that we come up with a letter, uh, that also kind of indemnifies the county from any damage to the home, any liability, as well as providing FEMA, uh, information about what types of trainings are going to happen. Um, you know, which properties are, they're going to occur at and so on and so forth, just to cover our bases, uh, with FEMA since these were purchased with federal dollars. So these two, uh, agreements will kind of be put forth to IDHS and FEMA. Uh, we've also included both pre-disaster and hazard mitigation to cover kind of all properties. And then if any additional properties are acquired by the county, right now, these are just covering what we have currently. If additional ones come on, we'll come back to the board and, and request amendments to this agreement. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I believe, uh, Ray is on the call who is introduced. I also, uh, invited, uh, Chief Mike Battles and Chief, Battalion Chief Jennifer Toby. I'm not sure if they're on, um, from Southwest Central Fire Territory. Oh, you're right there.
Yeah. I do want to thank you, Chris, for, for not only your hard work with the FEMA buyout program, but also for this partnership, which I think is a great, and anything we can do to, to benefit the local units of government around us. I think this is a great partnership.
I agree.
Yep. I've got a question, a couple of questions. Um, when, when will you all be doing the training?
So the training would have to occur within, uh, our 90-day window. So the first home that we acquired was, uh, March 18th. So 90-day window would be June 16th that it'd have to be demoed. So we're looking at May for probably most of these.
Hey, when, what, can you give me a heads up? Cause I'd like to watch that training and be out there when it's done.
Yep.
Is our, um, our emergency management people involved in this at all that we have with the county?
Um, I know, I know Ray suggested that we work directly with fire departments on this. Um, you know, happy to introduce, uh, EMA to it as well. But if Chief Battles wants to.
I, I believe what's so exciting about this is because of the number of the homes that we have, the opportunity to utilize and we're going to be able to utilize.
You may want to talk.
I'm sorry.
If you could please state your name and address for the record as well, please.
Mike Battles. I am the fire chief of Southwest Central Fire Territory. Uh, our address is 19971 Kern Road in South Bend, Indiana. Um, what's so exciting about this is we do not have the opportunity all the time to have real life scenarios and environments to be able to train in. And with the numbers of possibly the homes that we have, we will have the opportunity to involve all the area fire departments, especially the, some of the smaller fire departments like ourselves with North Liberty, Lakeville, Madison, that don't have, um, the ability to train in, you know, huge training facilities to be able to utilize them, bring them in and to train with them alongside us and other fire departments, which we desperately need. So we're very excited about this because we can wipe out half or maybe all of our mandatory trainings for the year in real life environment scenarios. Um, so that's why when, uh, uh, Ray gave me a call and Mr. Brown got in touch, we were so excited to be able to try to do this. Um, there is a home in, in Penn Township that if possible, and we would come back to the board, is to do a live burn training, with Elkhart Fire and their recruits there, along with our firefighters. We would take care of all the permits. We would have the proper instructors, the certified instructors to do that, but the area where it's located at would be a perfect way to do that. We would notify the community exactly what we're doing at that time. But as the homes come available, what we'd like to do is put a, a regular training calendar together on all this and to be able to show you exactly what we're doing at each one of these locations and when we're going to be doing it and what other fire departments we're inviting. So I would appreciate your, uh, consideration to approve this. And again, we're very excited to have this opportunity and like to, uh, thank Ray and Mr. Brown for giving us the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
So right now, it's, uh, what, four houses on Opal and one on Pearl?
Yes, I believe that's currently what we have, currently what we have acquired through this program. Uh, we've got, I believe, two more properties up to be closed next week and then another property in May sometime. So that's been kind of the first glut and then, uh, we'll be reaching out to the remaining homeowners to inquire about their interest. Uh, you know, there's, there's some give and take. People are, are not sure based off of appraised values, things like that, um, that they will absolutely take the offer, but, uh, we'll be reaching back out, uh, to inquire about that interest. But right now, it's just, just these properties that we currently own as the county.
Gotcha. And I guess, uh, a logistical question. Are you going to go like from station to these or do we get out there, everybody hangs out, then we go, let's do this? Are we going to go specifically? Like when we used to train a long time ago, Hammond, when I started with the revolver on SWAT, we would do actual, the whole southeast side before they built Ivy Tech and Boys and Girls Club. We had that big area and we would go, boom, we would know a call was coming because everybody had your own radios. Boom, we would do that. So we'll, moral of the story is will we go from station, you guys are cooking spaghetti or whatever, eh, 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 and we're going to Opal.
Because of the distances, uh, from other fire departments where we're doing that, because these will not all be live burns. We're, we're going to come back and ask for live burn permits.
Okay.
Um, but as far as our annual trainings or whatever, this just gives us the real life scenarios. Now, when we go to, to live burns like your SWAT team and things, yes, we will set up scenarios.
Okay.
And depending on the size of the homes or whatever, how many, uh, scenarios we can go through at the time. But yes, it allows us to train our, our young firefighters, um, and our new officers of, of, of size up and proper command structures or whatever. So again, um, we're very, very excited to be able to, to have this opportunity to repurpose these, these homes, you know, that unfortunately people have had a disaster, but to make it good to be able to do that. So, um, and I will be available at any time.
Yeah, I'll get with you.
Yeah.
I think Commissioner Costelny would volunteer if you need a victim in there to come out.
We would, we, we actually.
Or a fire starter.
Yeah.
Fire starter role.
Okay.
But I'll check with, cause I think our emergency management probably needs to be on board a little bit with some of that.
Be happy.
And also you guys, the airports having some drills Thursday, y'all going to that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes. Yep. So.
I'd be the guy flying the plane and it bounces it.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for me?
No, appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I have a fire going on right now. So if I may be.
There are no more questions or comments. Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this for training the fire department.
Second.
There's a motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is request approval of resolution R13C2021, authorizing inter-local agreement related to the McKinley Avenue Water Main Extension Project.
Thank you very much. Bill Shaleo, Economic Development with Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth with offices on the seventh and 11th floor. The next three items are all related to a, a couple of projects. First, the McKinley Avenue Water Main Extension and those then tie into a Penn Township Fire Station number 13 project. So first, I'd like to address resolution RC132021. And this is a resolution between the Board of Commissioners authorizing an interlocal agreement related to the McKinley Avenue Water Main Extension Project. What we're seeking to do is take a water line, a new water line from Evergreen Drive, ultimately to Bittersweet Road that will connect two existing Mishawaka segments of their water line. And this new water line segment will power the fire station and then other development opportunities that exist along the north side of the road, along McKinley between Evergreen Drive and Bittersweet. The approximate cost of construction of that segment, uh, actually segment one, which is from Evergreen Drive to Candace Lane would be $180,163. All work will be performed by the City of Mishawaka's Municipal Water Utility. And so that work will be done, uh, as soon as this agreement and a related agreement are signed by City of Mishawaka. Second part of this resolution approves funding in the amount of $34,115 to acquire easements to put the water line in between Evergreen Drive and Bittersweet Road. Uh, so what we'd ask for your approval of in this resolution is to approve this resolution as well as the interlocal agreement attached to it. If there's any. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there in fact any questions?
Negative.
Is there a motion?
Yes, there's a motion to approve this resolution R-13-C-2021 for the Water Main Extension Project there on McKinley.
Second.
We have motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, resolution R-14C-2021, authorizing construction agreement related to McKinley Avenue Water Main Extension.
So resolution RC-142021 is specific to the actual agreement itself with the Mishawaka Water Department. So the first was the inter-local that allowed us to transfer funds to the water department. This is an actual agreement for construction services for phase one of the project. So that would be between Evergreen Drive and Candace Lane. That work would be performed by the Mishawaka Water Department in the amount of $180,163. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions?
Negative.
Is there a motion?
There is a motion to approve resolution R-14-C-2021 for construction agreement for the McKinley Avenue Water Main Extension.
Second.
We have motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Finally, request approval of resolution R-15C-2021, authorizing inter-local agreement for the construction of an entrance roadway for the Penn Township Fire Station number 13 project.
And lastly, resolution RC-152021 is an agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the Penn Township Board. This will provide funds to Penn Township. Penn Township did all the bidding and contracting work for the construction of Candace Lane, which is a new entrance point for the fire department. The trucks will enter directly onto McKinley, but have to circulate back through this new entrance drive, Candace Lane. Funds are also being provided to do site work and, and other earthwork related to the development of this project. The total budget for this project is just under 400 and, I believe, 485,000. The redevelopment commission, or 479,668 was the bid amount. However, the redevelopment commission at their meeting approved a budget amount of $500,000 to cover some additional costs related to some of the site work on site. So we're asking for your approval of this resolution. This resolution, as well as this inter-local agreement, as well as the previous inter-local agreement, will be signed by the respective boards and, and commissions, Penn Township, City of Mishawaka. So I would ask for your approval of this resolution and related inter-local agreement.
I do see some of our friends from Penn Township, but I don't know if they've got any comments.
Yeah, we, we received, I don't know if I'll follow the commissioner, we received a letter on, and I talked with the representatives there last night. They have several questions. We're attempting to explain it of something that happened before I was elected with the, the former engineer. So if you want to follow Andy's lead, whoever is on there wants to talk about your perspective to, to bring us up to speed.
But I guess so more specific to this, I mean, if there are other things, we can have that conversation.
Right.
I guess specific to this particular resolution.
Right now, yeah.
Okay. Good morning, all. My name is Doris Portalese. Address is 210 East Russ Avenue, Mishawaka, Indiana, 46545. So first of all, want to thank Bill Shalio and the St. Joseph County Redevelopment for approving last Tuesday the $500,000 for this Candace Lane project. However, it is costing $479,668, which leaves very little funds for us to do other work on the site that has always been discussed with the redevelopment or economic development and Bill Shalio. And so we are asking that, that we can have an open conversation about additional funding for the project as the Candace Lane extension was something that was mandated by the county. Our original plan did not have our return coming from anywhere else other than our original site where we had two curb cuts. So again, we're just wanting to keep open communication so that we can continue and complete our project with additional funding that we're asking for.
Could you, for clarification, kind of explain that a little more on the next step? Or Bill, do you know what they're talking about?
Yeah, I received an email last night with an additional request for funds. I have not had a chance to review it.
Okay.
We've got another meeting at 12:30 today that I've been prepping for, so we'll get it reviewed and, and provide some feedback back to Penn Township.
Can I, Deb, this would fall in your district?
Yes.
Okay, so Deb will be on that.
I talked with Doris a lot about this, and I'm happy that we're moving forward with it, so yeah.
Okay, cool.
I think also the chief is on the line, the Penn Township Fire Chief, as well as Kent Heiser. He is our board president, along with Andrew from Epic, our architect, and also Brian Blight, and I think they have a few little things that they would like to add, or at least I think so.
Yes, I'll go ahead and speak now, if that's okay. This is Chief Bamberwini from the Penn Township Fire Department, 13960 Jackson Road, Mishawaka, Indiana. Yes, in reference to the, the Candace Lane issue, when we design any, any modern-day fire station, as you may all know, always has a drive-through bays where it reduces the amount of backing into a garage with such a large apparatus. In doing so, we have to provide return access to the facility from the rear. We had done that in our initial architectural drawings, and for some reason, it was found upon to allow us a second curb cut, which would be right in the general area as the exit, to provide us with that return. For some reason, we, we could not, we could not advocate that to the, the engineering department at the time, that they refused our second curb cut. Their idea was to, to develop Candace Lane themselves and allow us to come off of Candace Lane. And that was our only option at the time, which was obviously a lot more expensive venture than just providing a return drive from McKinley to the back of the station. And that's how that all developed. So in saying that, I, I strongly support Doris's concerns in reference to the amount of money to be spent on this Candace Lane extension, which could have been avoided easily with a second curb cut on our property.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments?
Yeah, this is Brian Blight with Core Construction, 1650 South Bend Avenue, South Bend, Indiana. I, we're the construction manager for the project. It, it's been a, a long-time evolution of the, the planning for this project. When we got involved back in 2018, actually, is when this started. The scope was limited to the, the five-acre site that's targeted for the fire station. The, the county, discussions with the county on how they could help the project overall began about that time, and shortly thereafter, there were further discussions with the county and Penn Schools on possibly acquiring property that was adjacent to the, the fire station. And that's where this, this Candace Lane extension came about, was to serve a potential property that was to the north of the fire station for the county. That, that, those negotiations never came to fruition, and thus, the need for this, this Candace Lane for the county didn't, didn't really serve itself anymore. But yet, the county pushed that we needed to have this extension included as a part of our fire station project. As you can see from the, the dollars that have been provided, the, the $500,000 that, that the county is pledging towards this is really only covering the cost of what they've added to the project as we see it somewhat unnecessarily. Maybe it does serve something in the future, but there's no immediate planned development, you know, to the north of the fire station. So when, you know, I think that's what generated the discussion and the letters that were, were circulated here over the last 24 hours or so. Back, back in our earlier discussions, you know, additional assistance from the county to cover all of the costs of this new fire station were, were, were the gist of where the assistance requests were coming from. And at this point, with the, the $500,000, you know, covering barely a little bit more than what the need is for that Candace Lane extension, we're not really able to assist in the dollars that are required for the fire station. One, one other side note here, too, the, the property where the fire station is, it was acquired, portions of it was acquired through an agreement with Penn Schools, the, the property that they own there. And one of the, the things that, that helped to put us over the mark with that was that there was a discussion about a sheriff's substation to be located on this fire station property to help support that area. The, the, the funds to put that in, you know, are, are something that is over and above what the dollars for the fire station are, but were an element that we're, that we're also committed to as a part of the overall program. And, and the, the additional funds that are needed for that now, that the county garage, which could potentially house that sheriff's substation, is not able to do that, there, there's still a need for these funds to provide that and, and complete that effort. So I think, I think that's something that's important that, that is considered as well.
Thank you, sir.
Let's see, real quick, did, did you guys express all this to the redevelopment commission or is this, this starting now?
Let's, let's do, it seems like we've got some questions, and this probably isn't the most ideal setting to address items. So why don't we table this, and then we can have further discussion to, to, that'd be a bit more conducive to having meaningful change. So is there a motion to table this?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, make a motion to table?
Is that all right? Okay, I'm, I'll motion to table that then.
We got a motion. We'll count that as a second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Old business. We got none. Public comments? Are there any public comments? Hearing none? A motion to recess is in order.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion to second. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Tough luck. We are recessed.
Thanks for the Zoom universe.